Good evening, and at this time we'll call the meeting of the Acton School Committee, January 8, 2019, to order at 5:00. And let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any adjustments to the agenda tonight?
Just that at 8:01, the budget process, between 8:01 and 8:02, we need to go into an executive session, and then we'll come out of executive session and publicly vote on the support staff contract tonight. So that's what our executive session is. So if there's anybody from the public who wants to come back, that vote will be after executive session. Anybody who's here who wants to leave, absolutely head on out at that point, because we've got to go back into our meeting. And just two quick announcements about where. Jen is going to take the notes tonight from the video. She had a, something she had to deal with tonight. And Andy is outstanding in the parking lot. If we need him for anything, we can get him, but he's better served out there. We're better served with him out there. Okay, very good.
So we're moving number 10, right?
We're just moving 10.
We need to move 10. I just drew a line. So we're moving 10 between 8:01 and 8:02. We can't vote on a support staff contract in public without that executive session first to go over pieces of negotiations that you need to.
You don't need it.
No?
All right, then. Any comments from the public? All right, then, let's go to our celebration of learning. Do we have celebration?
We don't. It was just still on there from the following.
We have the following one, okay. Then we will skip to number four, which is our consent agenda. And I'll look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, file vote.
Yeah, he's all done. We had you as outstanding in the parking lot.
All right, let's go on to number five. Do any of you have any questions or comments on the reports of the administration?
I do with the ESSA report card. I mean, developing in every area?
So if you can hold on to number six, that's the progress monitoring report. I'll go over that with you to what I know so far.
All right.
Yeah, to give you an update.
That's all I had.
Anybody else have anything from any of the administrators' reports? All right, then. We'll go on to number six.
Okay, so, as mentioned, I provided to the school committee our ESSA report, which is the federal government's mandate that each state develop some sort of reporting system for federal monies that flow to the states. Therefore, each community needs to report back to the state on certain measures. And the areas are chronic absenteeism, academic progress for the English language arts, academic progress in math, progress in ELP. Lori, the P on ELP?
English language proficiency.
Proficiency, and then ELA, academic achievement, math, academic achievement, and graduation and combined graduation, five and six. Those last two, graduation and combined graduation, we don't have to worry about because we're pre-K through eighth school. I showed you how Acton did across the board in all of these, and we're developing. Now, the state gave me the data, and I shared, I got it on the 28th, which was over the break, I think it was a Friday. And then I saw Lori when we got back together after the new year, and shared it with her and Kim, and we looked at some things. And it was, it was interesting. The state was going to release this data to the public Monday, and has held off on doing so because they're still looking for some feedback from school districts around some of this data. So I'm not sure exactly what will change. Well, it's public here because I gave it to you. Assuming it was coming out Monday from the state, it didn't. So once it went out in the packet, it's out in the packet. So I'm sharing it with you that we came in and developing. Now, it depends on how you want to look at it. So meeting is where the state says, this is where you meet the criteria. We're one under that in all areas. To me, that's a rally cry to, we can do better. It didn't really shock me that we came in at developing. And as my cover letter said to you, it's interesting if you were to, when you have the opportunity to look at how other schools did around the state as well, especially on attendance.
I know, but if you could just explain, there's emerging, developing, meeting, and excelling. So there's four categories.
Right. The emerging group, as I look at it, it's, it's interesting the way they say this emerging, it depends on what you're looking at. So for instance, for example, in chronic absenteeism, all eligible student group populations have a chronic absenteeism rate of 10% or higher. So they, they break down your groups of, we're such a small school. For instance, we looked at the absenteeism without getting into it to try to identify kids. We had, Lori, I want to be careful with this. We had four children that put us at, that were.
So it was a particular subgroup of kids, only like the four kids in it.
Yeah.
And because they were absent so many days, they put us up to 50% of that group.
So four kids would have had eighteen, it's approximately 18 days of missed of school. So four kids, in this case, in our subgroup, missed 18 days of school, which is a lot of school for four kids. That put us in a certain category. In this case, it put us in developing. If it was more, we'd be in emerging. Now, what's interesting about that is, we also have a habitual truancy law and a process. So for kids that reach seven consecutive or 10 cumulative unexcused absences, those children, there's a step in a process. They're notified, there's meetings, there's quite a process too, and we follow that process. This, and clarification, and working with Lori and her check item with the state, is total absences, whether it's excused or not. So technically, the group that's going to take a vacation when the flights are lower, and they're going to leave in March and take their kids away for a week, they're doing well, let's say academically, they're doing well economically, and they're taking off to Disney for a week in March, those are the kids that count in this too. So it's not just the chronic absenteeism kids that we are catching and working with, it's anybody who doesn't come to school, excused or not excused. Interesting measure. Part of the reason why, I think, I'm not saying it's true, but part of the reason why I think they're withholding some of the data for the public is they're probably looking at that particular piece.
Right.
With the chronic absenteeism. Because I've looked at all schools across the state. It's interesting, I'll just say it's interesting to look at. I'm not going to sit here and say, I'm going to compare us to anybody else. I'm going to say, this is our data, and we need to do better. Agreed. And when the opportunity comes about to look at the statewide data, I'll know what the original measures were, because I got them on the 28th, and see if it changes anyone with the released data.
So now, who does this? Who says you're in this category for math and English?
The state of Maine has made those determinations over three years of data.
Testing data?
Correct. And IC data, infinite campus data, as far as attendance goes. Remember, we upload twice a year for our attendance, April and October, October and April. How often do you come? Who are you? Each student has a medum's number, so you can't be in two places at once. You can drill into this. There are, there were some things that I looked at around behavior data. And I looked at Lori, actually, it was Kim, I think, the first time, and said, boy, this behavior data is wrong, because I report that. Then we looked closely, it was 15, 16, it was the year before I arrived. So you've got to look at, we had chronic absenteeism as your entire school. But yet, the proficiency levels that we just talked about, those are just three through eight. So pre-K through two doesn't, then why aren't measuring that for them? So you've got to really look at, what are they telling you, and what subgroup are we looking at? We, I'm really hesitant to drill down into this and have Lori really get up and explain it, which is probably what we should do when it goes public. Because I'm not sure if it's going to change when it goes public. We're a little bit ahead of the curve, because I released it, thinking Monday they were going to release the data, and they didn't. So, yeah, publicly, Acton right now is developing across the board in all, in all areas. So I'm glad you caught that in the report, because that was part of what I wanted to do with progress monitoring. We will have a date when this is out to the public. Well, we will drill down, and we'll give you whatever you want, just like we do with PBIS and Swiss.
I know, but is this going to be an annual thing?
Supposed to be. And I hope it's apple to apple, that they continue to do the same.
Well, I remember we had a report card a few years ago.
That was different, though. That was more like a state report card. I think coming more on, I think it was more on us, either legislature, or the governor, or politics, about how each school is doing, we're going to give you a report card because you're a school. This is different, this is harnessed to federal monies, and the federal government said, you need to measure, and the state of Maine went with us. Lori, were you on one of the design teams around this when you were with 57?
I was on the Title I practitioners' meeting that went through, how do I identify schools and set up the criteria for a lot of this? And it had to be, it is tied to our federal waiver with the state, with the federal government around Title I and all the federal funds.
What is the tier level support for schools? It says we fall under tier one. What does that mean?
So, yeah, so then they're going to identify all those schools. So tier one support is, they'll, they'll monitor your status, pretty much, provide suggestions, technical support, but.
So your tier is based on how you, how you.
Correct.
So those schools that came in emerging were probably in so many categories would be, would have a tier two or tier three support.
Right.
And they'll have a, a person go in and sit with them and do some sort of support plan from the state.
Yeah, so you have to then say, yes, we're trying to get to meet, what was the other one? The next one up, meeting?
Meeting or something.
Is that what you, you have to give them, like, this is how we're going to try to get to the next level? Is there anything?
Not yet. I haven't received anything that says, if you're at this level, then you need to tell us how you're going to move to the next level, which one would assume would be the next step.
Right, so there's no next step?
Not yet. They haven't, I'm thinking, because they haven't released it to the public, they're still getting enough feedback from local school districts.
Yeah.
To relook at the data. Then they need to release that and say, we're pretty sure this is correct. Then those schools that have more emergings and developments, what are you going to do about it?
Yeah.
That would be my hope. My hope is, if tier one, they give us some guidance.
Yeah.
So what do you want us to do? So if this is our plan, how are you going to help us with this plan? To move from developing to meeting.
So infinite campus, and they looked at our MEA scores, like what?
That, your MEA scores would be where you're looking at academic progress.
Uh huh.
And your achievement.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know, it's just interesting.
How do they get this all together? Will we want to something else?
Well, I hope not, because.
I know, but that's what happens, right. So this is based on, you know, they use the 2015-16 year as sort of baseline MEA when they came with the new test, and then the, the growth data now has been based on the last two years of results, because they wanted to give that first year sort of a baseline year. So, yes, so the plan is, this year's results, you know, then we have to show growth over time. And, and they went away from those letter grade report cards.
Yes.
To a growth model, so that now this is based on, and you'll see it in your descriptors, you know, you have to show 100 points, or grow, or certain percentage points.
I was glad, it was interesting, because I had looked at this a number of ways, and I'm glad it wasn't a, you know, you get an A, or a B, or a C, or D, or an F, because that's how they did it.
Yes, yes.
And there is no C-plus school out there. It's, the rubric describes where you're at based on data points.
Yeah.
Right now, some of the data points, I think, are being discussed, because I think some schools are like.
I'm old fashioned, I like when grades are A, B, C, A, D, F. I like when schools are labeled A, B, C, D, F. I know what F means, I know what A means. It's a little, you know, in between.
It doesn't.
So this, these descriptors are just wordy.
Listen.
This is a one, and this is a four. Exactly. I mean, you can do it several ways, but the A, B, C, D, F is not a bad system that we had for many, many years. I just have to say that.
We're talking about schools being.
School report.
Yeah.
School, it's fine to say, if the school is an A, I want my kid to go there. And if it's an F, I don't want my kid to go there, because I know what an F means. You know what I mean? He's emerging, developing, meaning, whatever. The old system, I knew what it meant.
We have this program here now.
And we had, and we're away, I don't know, an A, or B, or C. When we did that report card like five years ago, I don't know.
Yeah, that was about five years ago, that's exactly, I, yeah.
See, I can't even remember what we were.
I don't know.
Was it C?
Was it a C?
It was a C, yeah.
No C-plus.
And I, what I remember about those A, B, C, D, E, F, whatever, is that the ones that were As were almost always the ones that were prosperous communities, like families and guys.
Yes, yes, yes.
And the, and the, and the lower ones were always where you had a lot of diversity and backgrounds and ethnic diversity.
The lows went out of business.
Right, places up north where they don't have the support, and, yeah. So it's, it's hard to tell from that. For instance, you might have a school that, they're doing a great job with the kids with what they have to work with, but because they're not found with their capabilities, or some place that has a lot of money, they're not able to give them all the extra things that excel them and put them up and above. So they end up being low, where your kid might be getting just as good.
Well, this, this might turn out the same way, then.
It could. I, the thing that's tougher about the size of a scale of a population that we have is, there aren't many subgroups. And if there is, a couple of kids can tip, can tip the scale, and they can tip it in the favor, too. You could be like, excelling. We've got these brilliant kids over here, well, there's two of them.
I know.
But you want to stand up and say, hallelujah, right? At the same time, you could be over in emerging, but you're doing terrible. Two of them are really struggling. You know, we know who they are, and we're trying to help them. So it's really difficult. You always got to kind of shoot for the middle in a school this size.
Yep, and it also factors in all your speciality.
Yeah, that's everybody.
Yeah, it's everything.
Oh, sure?
Right.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Well, we're plowing again here.
Okay, more to come on that, as it's well defined from this. It's not quite as defined as we wanted it to be tonight, but as it is, we will give you a presentation on what this means.
I heard some other chatter around from other districts that they're glad the state didn't release us, that they're looking.
I just looked at Lori and smiled, because we both know what the state picture is.
Yeah.
And Kim does, too. We, I shared it with them and went over it, but we're only looking at Acton here. It's just important for us to look at Acton. It's not important what it was.
We're not the only ones that would like to have them take another look at it.
Right.
Just one more question about the absenteeism. When you say 18, is that for each child, had that many?
Yeah, and that's roughly based on 180. I used 18, you know, 10% of 180, and it's really 182 days of school, you know, you're, yeah.
Okay.
And that's whether you're excused or not excused, you're just not here.
Right.
So.
Okay.
So broad, broad group of kids.
All right, then. Is that all for progress monitoring?
That is.
All right, and the long range planning committee met tonight, so do we have a report from them?
Yeah. You want me to go? Yeah. We just went over our plan for projects that might be coming up in the next couple of years. Paving is one of our favorite things to plan for, to save some money for, and we reviewed some of the other capital projects that are coming, getting ready for budget season.
Okay, so basically, just looking at what we're going to be needing to think about as we begin the budget process, and what we're looking at, long range is always.
Long range. Yep. Mary would like to point out that the newest part of our school is 27 years old.
That means heating, yeah.
Yeah.
Boom.
Yep.
Just keep that in mind.
That means that the oldest part of our school.
She didn't know that.
No, no.
Okay.
It's not that color.
All right, let's move on then to 72, which is policy reviews.
Well, let's see, we have a first read of JLF reporting child abuse and neglect, and a first read of JLFA child sexual abuse prevention and response, and then a review of GDA substitute pay scale. That's a review, things are reviewing.
Okay.
And, I don't know, we looked, we had these, and then took out words and put them back in, and this is the end result.
So brand new.
Yep, this is, right, this is the end result of a last.
Very simple, yeah.
Thing of, right.
JLF, right?
Right, yeah.
And JLFA.
Yep. And thanks to Kim, she keeps up, this is all state things and whatnot, and teachers have to go to classes.
There is.
And we have somebody doing that that can.
We do.
Can form the, right.
We do, yeah.
I mean, it's just, we never get to the ones that we already have, because every time we meet, here comes something new, you know?
Down the pipe, one of the best stuff, yeah.
And we do have a 10-year process. We have Excel spreadsheet that when things are decade-old, we revisit them, whether a new law, or whatever, or not, we go back and look at policies.
That's going to take three years.
I'll look for a motion to accept JLF and JLFA tonight as a first reading policies, reporting child abuse and neglect, and child sexual abuse prevention and response.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? And then, a new one, a review, not a new one, a review one, just to adopt as updated, would be file GDA on substitutes.
Review and update, correct?
Review and update, yeah.
And you can see the difference in scale.
And the reason is to meet, the minimum page went up in January, so this is to meet for long.
This is.
I know, but we never moved the 181 days.
Yeah, I had to move that to 180.
We neglected. So we're doing it now. Good.
Okay, so I look for a motion to review and update as of this date, file GDA on substitute pays.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
And all we need is two reads. Please, change that one, come on, remember, whatever.
It used to be three.
Yep.
Well, two reads, then it came back to a vote.
Right.
Okay, and 73 is our negotiating team.
I would like to say we are just about, depending on how the vote goes later, after our executive session, but we hope the support staff is just about finished, and almost finished with teachers. Fingers crossed. Hands crossed.
All right, thank you. And new business, budget process.
Budget process. Thought I'd just very briefly take a moment there, update the committee and the administrators on our process. It's going to look very similar to the last few years, very transparent process. There's a budget preparation timeline in your packet. And at this point, not, I have not met with everyone, Kim has met with everyone, but I still need to meet with Lori on some professional development, and I want to share up some things with Sharon under Special Ed. And then by the time we get together on our first meeting, which is really the 22nd of January, that we can start looking at cost centers, and we can start looking at articles. At that point, as I explained to the staff, right now, the budget's in the school. Still looking at it, still making adjustments, and then we're going to hand that off to the school committee, and warrant finances at the table to advise. And the school committee will go through the cost centers in line by line and make decisions about what we need to do to develop the budget. And then, and then as we do that, we'll move forward to the April 2nd town meeting. That's when we have the special school, special town meeting for the school budget. It's listed there as Tuesday night at 7:00 PM. For the administrators, they'll only need to be here for their cost center in case if there's particular questions. So Mike, technology, Andy, building and maintenance, professional development, you know, would go to Lori, and anything in Special Ed would be Sharon. I'll be here for everything, working with all of you. My intent is to do this this year. I have not sat down with the Chair of the Warrant Finance yet, but I did bump into him the other night and said, I'd like to meet with you at a town meeting just last night. I don't have the entire list of warrant finance yet. I asked Jen for that, and she's going to email it to me, so we know who's sitting on warrant finance. Let's start our first meeting, as we did last year, with kind of some expectations. We have our agreements, we agree to, and I think there's about eight of those. I like those, you seemed to have liked those, warrant finance seemed to like those. We agree to do these things, and we open each of our meetings with that, so we know what our norms are for our meeting. This year, I'm going to be, I'm going to ask that if anyone, whether that be school committee, but I don't think we've seen this as school committee, you've been 100% attendance, and when Kevin was with us, he would Skype in, so that's attending. If you miss a meeting, and you're on school committee or warrant finance, just get caught up before the next meeting, so that we don't have to repeat that meeting with questions that have already been answered. So I want to keep an efficient, transparent, professional process, and I think we did pretty well with that last year. I were also, I'm also going to work with the warrant finance committee, find out if they had any questions right up front that first night. So it gives us a couple of months to do data research if we need to. We did that last year, and I think that was beneficial. When we were asked to compare ourselves to like schools, because a lot of the like schools are not in this county, they're in other places, but there are, there are many pre-K through eight schools in the state of Maine. We just need to look outside of York County to do that. So I'll be prepared to do that as well. There is no end number, no end game right now. It's, we're going to work through the process and see where we land, and we're going to identify what kids need to meet, what, what we need to meet the kids' needs in Acton, also respecting, you know, what the tax base can handle in the town, and set the bar where we can, where we can help the kids and achieve to the level that we need to. Developing is not okay with me. If we're going to use that as one measure, that's a call to take a look. If math's an area we've got to look at, I got to work a bit with Lori to say, okay, where in math do we have to do better? And what is our RTI process? We're just on the tip of the iceberg. We're just doing some great work with bringing together our RTI process with our PBIS. It's going to produce some really good results academically and behaviorally. But is there a cost to that? I don't know. There may be, but as we work through this process, I think we'll discover that. So that's kind of the plan. That first meeting is a, is a big one. It's to set the expectations. I'm hoping we don't have any extra meetings, so to speak. We've experienced that before, and I'm hoping there isn't a need for that this year, that we have any kind of extra meetings. We do have a placeholder meeting that, in March. Really, the, really the fifth, is it, if needed? That could be a revisit list night, too, you know? That's generally what we'll do.
Well, it could be a snowstorm.
Could be a snowstorm.
I'm one of the other meetings.
Here's something I should probably ask you before we even get too far into this. Our rule that we all agreed on is if, if today was a snow day, we'd meet tomorrow.
Yes.
We going to do the same with budget meetings?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can agree to it, yes.
We do that with all of our meetings, right? I'll be really clear with warrant finance about that, too. It's just easy. If we have a Tuesday schedule.
Yeah.
We don't have school, we'll move it to the.
Wednesday.
To the Wednesday. And the other one is, if, if it's a, I, I'll ask the warrant finance when we get together, but I wouldn't be opposed to if the morning is a morning, we cancel school because it's horrific, but by 2:00 in the afternoon, it's decent. It's about the kids not coming to school, it's not about the adults. I'd be okay with...
Yeah, me too.
Trying to host it that evening to stay on track, if you guys are okay with that.
Just communicate it.
We just communicate that, because we're in that, that storm season. That, that's about it. It's, it's going to be a very similar process, and we've learned a lot over the last few years about being super transparent, and I'm sure that's the way we'd like to keep it.
So say you miss a meeting, how quickly does the video go up online?
Usually the next day.
So that's good.
Not hard to get caught up.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
You can look it up.
It's a good one.
Or telephone.
Or call somebody.
Call their members. You can't keep going over and over the same thing all the time, you know?
Right.
Yeah, I, and I think it's, I think the, the school committee hasn't had the issue with that, it's been the warrant and finance committee that's caused a lot of, you know, questions like something we've already clarified and gone over. So if you can clarify that with the warrant finance committee before we start, like you said.
They could call me, I'll tell them what we did. You know what I mean?
It's normal, it's really not difficult to fill in the blank in technology.
Flip classroom approach. Watch the video and come back, then come to class with the course.
It's like Khan Academy.
Yes. Just a quick question.
Okay.
As we, I, I just want to confirm that you two will be on the stipend committee like you did last year?
Yeah.
Okay with that?
Sure.
We'll have to meet during the process.
Yeah, I was just trying to get a little bit ahead, I just wanted to make sure you guys were among two, and I will, I have a parent, so I, and I...
Just set up a meeting.
Yep.
Let us know when the meeting is.
Hello. Thank you.
About nine to 3:00.
Nobody's so hard to get along with, you girl.
So any other questions about as we move forward with the process? I think, I feel we're pretty comfortable with it. The last two years has been pretty straightforward.
Better, better each year.
It improves, you know, thanks to Kim and her expertise, keeping us all straight.
And quick turnaround, thank you.
Yes.
For the changes.
Great.
I think it'd be a good public statement to thank Kevin too, because he really pushed us to keep an archival document and a kind of on-running record on how we did things. We can go right back to that, to be like, oh yeah, this is how we do things, and he pushed us to do that, and I think it paid off.
Yeah, definitely.
I think another big plus is the budget book.
Yeah.
That's available to go out to everybody, you know, in advance of the meeting, in advance of the vote. So, yeah, I think we've, we've, we're kind of beyond the emerging, would you say?